Welcome to the May 13, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by Commissioner Murray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the invocation tonight, I offer a spring prayer written by Ralph Waldo Emerson. For flowers that bloom about our feet, for tender grass so fresh, so sweet, for song of bird and hum of bee, for all things fair we hear and see, Father in heaven, we thank thee. For blue of stream and blue of sky, for pleasant shade of branches high, for fragrant air and cooling breeze, for beauty of blooming trees, Father in heaven, we thank you. Emerson was possessed of a mind so brilliant, he could plainly see the profound beauty in everyday life. May we as a body, as a city and a community lean into that wisdom as we go about our conversations, our work and our lives. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unforgiven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mars, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable? Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I move to excuse Mr. Crable.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion is approved. In hearing no objection, Mr. Crable is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of April 23, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 22 meeting as presented.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Tonight, we have a presentation on water service inventory. Mr. Wiki, you're at the podium to deliver that presentation. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So I'm Elizabeth. I'm honored to work with Aaron Klein in the Department of Public Works, and I'm a little out of my element today, as I usually work behind the scenes. But I'm here to share more about our water service line inventory that you will be hearing more about in the coming months. The EPA recently announced steps to strengthen the regulatory framework on lead in drinking water. This includes an initiative to find all lead service water lines in the distribution systems of every water utility in the U.S., including the private service lines that connect your home to the city's water main. The city is in the process of inventorying all of our water infrastructure, including customer service line materials that are connected to the public system. We have also developed a survey customers can use to report their service line material. Identifying pipes on the customer service side can help us determine where lead may exist in the water system. All City of Sandusky water customers are being asked to complete this survey. Further information on how and where to check your service line material is available on the city's website, and in coming weeks, city staff will attempt to reach out to all customers via social media, billing statements, the annual water report and other methods. Water service lines are usually located in one of three places. In the basement, the incoming water service in your home can either come from the basement floor or from within the basement wall. If you have a crawl space, the water service line should route through your foundation and enter from the floor. If your home is on a slab, the incoming water service should come up through the main floor, typically in a utility closet. Most homes in Sandusky have a lead, galvanized steel or copper service line coming into their home. Some have plastic, and larger buildings may have iron. Lead is a common, naturally occurring metallic element that can be found in air, soil and water. It has historically been used in plumbing because of its pliability and resistance to leaks, up until the last 50 years, when the risk to public health was more recognized and measures were taken to limit its use. It is important to note that if a service line contains lead, it does not mean customers cannot use water as they normally do. Although most cases of lead poisoning can be traced to impulation of lead dust or consumption of paint particles rather than water consumption, any risk of lead poisoning, no matter how slight, is a serious concern. The City of Sandusky constantly tests and adjusts the pH to ensure water is safe to drink, and lead and copper testing performed by the city in accordance with Ohio EPA requirements has not exceeded minimum threshold levels since testing began many years ago. A few tips to further reduce lead in your drinking water. If your water has gone unused for more than six hours, run any faucet used for drinking or cooking until it is consistently cold, it's usually about 30 seconds, before drinking or cooking with it. The flushing of your tap ensures the best quality water. Use only cold water for drinking, cooking and making food for infants. Please note that boiling water does not eliminate lead, and you may also opt to use a water filter that meets the standard for effective lead reduction. Sandusky has been selected by the USPA, EPA, sorry, to participate in the Get the Lead Out Glow Initiative. They have hired a consultant to provide direct assistance to the city to accelerate our inventory collection to meet the deadline of October 16 of this year. The consultant will also help to develop a lead line replacement plan and identify funding sources for replacing lead lines throughout the city over time. In our kickoff meeting in April, EPA staff applauded the city for being one of the first to reach out, as only a minimal number of communities will receive this level of assistance. All residents with concerns or questions are welcome to reach out to me at 419-627-5884 or via email at esowec at cityofsandusky.com. And finally, we ask that you encourage those within your networks to take the survey as soon as possible. You can find the survey on our website or by using this QR code. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Simple, but everybody, I think, can understand.
Very direct. Excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. Elizabeth, is a person like, I'm just using my mom as an example, she's 86, and she's still in her own home, but she doesn't use the internet, and she, I mean, is there any way she can get information if she came down here, just to know what she should be looking for?
She can give me a call. We will even, we will send somebody on site for anybody who needs help.
Just, okay.
Yes. Yeah. So give me a call, and we'll get something set up through their customer accounting office.
Okay. And our water tastes great.
Yeah.
Sure.
It is.
Mr. Murray?
Mr. Wiki, I just want to go over something, because we're talking about lead and water. Sometimes that alarms some people. You correctly noted, and I appreciate your noting that at the outset, that really lead ingestion comes from paint. Comes from paint, comes from paint. Once in a while, a water system goes awry. We've all read about Flint, Michigan. Perhaps you could just share a little bit of the background there. My understanding was it was a massive change in the chemicals that were used, which caused that lead that was contained in the pipes. There was, basically what happens is there's a corrosion that occurs in the pipe, and as long as that corrosion is maintained and the pH is maintained, the water flows through and doesn't pick up any lead. But something happened in Flint. Maybe we could just talk about the chemistry there for a minute. I see Mr. Klein gearing up to speak, so you may be saved.
Mr. Wiki, you're off the hook.
No, please. No.
Klein to the rescue.
Like, I would just confirm that that's true, and I believe they also started drawing from a different water source without full approval or regulatory oversight.
Yes, through the Commission President. This is something that, you know, I think that history's been pretty well documented is how the changes in their system, they move from one chemical to another, one source to another. Those are things that we have not done since I've been here. We've been very consistent in the chemicals we use. We have multiple locations where we take pH. We have taps in the lab that are running constantly, whether that's in the source water or in the water leaving the plant, to make sure that our pH is exactly where it should be. We can dose our chemicals to make sure that that's treated. We have the operators on at all times, so. And additionally, we also are required annually to go out to houses, go out into the community and take those lead samples, and we have not failed on those lead samples in the past since I've been here, so. And I'm not saying it's because I've been here, I'm saying that since I've been here, what I know is that we have not failed, and I've also been told that before that, we did not fail any of those as well. So our water is safe, we go through this process, and we definitely want to make sure that we're meeting all those requirements, not just for EPA, but also for the residents and to build that trust in the user.
Mr. Klein, that was a great life preserver you threw to Ms. Wiki. Thank you.
That's why he's here.
Good job. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
Is this just an EPA citywide effort? Is it the entire county or just the city?
It's all user, all water users in the U.S.
In the entire U.S.?
Through the Commission President, the effort that we're going through with this GLO, the Get the Lead Out Organization, US EPA put, hired a consultant to do, or multiple consultants around the country, they reached out to us about a month ago, month and a half ago, and we responded and said we'd like to do this. Now, all of the communities in Ohio are responsible for preparing this plan by October of this year. Some communities are farther ahead than we are, some are farther behind than we are. What we want to do is we want to make sure that we catch up. There's a lot of money that's coming out, and there's a lot of money that's already come out, so we want to make sure that we're able to apply for those funds and to move forward with projects in a systematic timeframe. And the plan that we're developing is citywide. That's our responsibility. We have the information of our lead system within the city. I know the other communities are also moving forward on their timeline as well and developing their plans.
One other question, I don't know if you have the answer to this. Do they, does the EPA regulate, like, bottled water and specifically spring water? Do they look for lead in spring water and those types of things?
I do not know the answer to that. I just wonder.
Additional comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Wiki.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing on zone map amendment at 416 Warren Street. That hearing will be conducted by our Chief Planner, Aaron Blair, and this is a public hearing. We'll entertain questions at the conclusion of this from the public and from the Commission.
This is a public hearing for a zone map amendment application. It's a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone parcel number 5600352.000, which is the address 416 Warren Street, from CS Commercial Service to RMF Residential Multifamily, and you'll see this legislation coming up on your next City Commission agenda. This is just the public hearing tonight. 416 Warren Street is currently a single-family property. It was historically a two-family property, and the applicant would like to extend the back of the building to create up to six residential units. By the zoning, there's plenty of space on the parcel for that many units per the setbacks and the lot coverage for the zoning, for multifamily zoning, but in order to do the residential that they'd like to do and provide those units, it would have to be rezoned. It's currently commercial service, and you can see on the map on the left, commercial service is that dark red, so the north, the south and the west properties are commercial service. And there are uses permitted currently in commercial services, including manufacturing of durable goods, metal finishing, assembly and fabrication of machine tools, boat building, yards for storage, coal and lumber. So as you imagine, since this is relatively residential surrounding, the multifamily residential zoning is more appropriate to the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding parcel. So Planning Staff recommended the rezoning, and the Planning Commission at their meeting on April 4, 2024 unanimously recommended the rezoning of this parcel.
Questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the Commission? Wow, you're getting off the hook easy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. I'll declare this public hearing closed. As we do every year about this time, we have a proclamation to encourage folks to use their seatbelts. It's called Click It or Ticket, and Commissioner Vargo has been kind enough to accept the responsibility of reading this proclamation.
Whereas the Memorial Day holiday weekend approaches and summer seems around the corner, an increased number of drivers will be traveling, and whereas, the safety and security of the citizens of the City of Sandusky and the surrounding areas are vitally important. And whereas, the 2023 seatbelt use rate was 91.9%, but we can do better. And whereas, in 2022, there were 11,302 unbuckled passenger vehicle occupants killed in crashes, and 59% of those deaths were unrestrained backseat passengers. And whereas, regular seatbelt use is the single most effective way to reduce injuries and fatalities in motor vehicle crashes, and is the best defense against impaired, aggressive and distracted drivers. And whereas, the use of seatbelts is supported by the laws of the City of Sandusky, and now therefore, do we hereby announce May 20 through June 2, 2024, as Click It or Ticket in the City of Sandusky, and urge all citizens to always wear seatbelts when driving or riding on our roadways dated this 13th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Vargo. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda item comments. No takers. Commissioners, you have before several communications from staff regarding various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So move.
Okay. But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, item A.
Item A will go to the regular agenda. Any additional items move from consent to regular agenda. Ms. Mars, will you present the consent agenda, less item A?
Yes, Mr. President. Item B, consent for Wonderware Software Renewal Agreement. Item C, consent for CDBG Agreement Amendment with New Jerusalem Warming Shelter. Item D, consent for adoption of updated Title VI Plan with FTA. Item E, approval of purchase and sale agreement for Land Bank Parcels on Third Street. Item F, consent to amend ordinance 24-016 for Scribner's Error for Toro mower.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I move for the adoption of items B through F of our consent agenda, being a resolution and several ordinances pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now, on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. We will turn to our regular agenda, starting with item A from the consent agenda, please.
The notice to legislative authority for D5, D6 liquor license, spiritus liquor for on-premises consumption only, beer, wine and mixed beverages for on-premises or off-premises in original sealed containers until 2:30 a.m., sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of 10:00 or 11:00 a.m. and midnight, for Chill Place LLC, first floor, rear, 1319 Tiffan Ave.
Commissioners, having heard this liquor license application, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
After talking with the police chief, when I read through this over the weekend, they had an incident the first night back, and maybe Chief Oliver, do you want a little bit more than?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
In order to put this properly into play, I'll make a motion. I don't care how it turns out, but I'll make a motion to indicate that we have no objection to this transfer.
Okay.
I don't care which, how it turns out, but we need a motion.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Now, we can have a discussion. Mr. Waddick, can you continue your discussion?
Do you want me to go, Commissioner? Through you, Commission President. Yes, we were called out there Saturday, the first night they've been open again in a while, for an incident in a parking lot where, long story short, the neighbors and the residents in the area have a real issue every time this establishment opens up for whatever that's taking place inside of it. This dates back years. They've changed the name of the establishment several times throughout the years, changed owners several times throughout the years. That's the Chill Palace, too. I know it says place in the minutes, but they're called the Chill Palace. And if there's anything we can do to at least have our voices heard before this gets approved at the state level with whatever the transfer is, and I know that's through the Department of Commerce and it's above all of us, I just think it would be a rational decision to at least have the opportunity to have a conversation before it gets out, you know, at least we're in front of it rather than dealing with it in the background.
My understanding is denying this would create a request for a hearing. Is that what we're doing?
At the state level, yes.
Yes, at the state level. So for us, for us to vote in a negative fashion would indicate that we request a hearing for this.
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Any additional discussion, Mr. Murray?
Mr. Chairman. So what I don't understand yet, and maybe there's some reason to believe that this is the case, and maybe it's a sensitive issue, so we want to have a limited discussion in public, but is there reason to believe that there's any continuity in the management or ownership such that the same problem is likely to recur? I know we had one incident over the weekend, and if you have reason to believe that, that's good enough for me. I do have reason to believe that, sir. Thank you.
Additional comments, commissioners?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner?
Just leaning on you for your expertise and background on this. So it's not my understanding, I want to make sure, this isn't like a transfer, that now they have new management, and then the very first time that they open, there's a problem? Or is this some kind of change that occurred with the same folks? And what is the history behind how often maybe the police have been called? I just need some background, so I understand.
Through you, Commission President. To you, Commissioner Coons. The name on this application is the same name on a previous application. I think there's, one of the applicants are getting off of the liquor license without having the file in front of me. We've had several, several nuisance complaints, nuisance letters. I've had meetings with this individual on this application in the past, trying to resolve issues that have constantly arose from the establishment. Under our nuisance ordinance, they've been fined several times, too. One of these names on this was one of those members that were fined through the nuisance ordinance as well.
Okay. And how long did you say this has been ongoing?
In my three years, it's been ongoing. The previous police chief here can speak for the previous establishment, but we've been dealing with it for at least the last three years. Sometimes it'll just remain closed for a while, and then sometimes it opens back up, and it's constant when it's opened back up.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Mars, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Pajali?
No.
Mr. Coons?
No.
Ms. Fargo?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
Mr. Brady?
No. That motion does, that motion does not pass, and that means we request a hearing on the statement.
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Mars, you present item number one, and that would be resolution number one of item number one.
It is requested a resolution be passed authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Development through the Roadwork Development Grant Program for the West Monroe Street Resurfacing Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall have immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution has passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number, number one, ordinance number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $225,000 from the Ohio Department of Transportation through the Office of Jobs and Commerce Economic Development Program for the West Monroe Resurfacing Project, authorizing the city manager to execute any grant agreements and to expend the funds consistent with the grant agreement, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
I would just like to say good job to Mr. Klein and his staff, because I know it's not always easy to get 629 money and also jobs and commerce money. It helps that it was manufacturing and industrial, but those are, those are always difficult to get unless you meet all the needed circumstances, so good job.
Through the Commission President, I would like to respond that this opportunity was brought to us through the GSP. They were aware of a possibility of Okamoto doing some work there, and they brought this to us and did a big portion of the legwork to get this to the finish line, so I'd like to make sure that I thank them as well and here.
We'll put a W in their column. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Mars, you call the roll on that ordinance, please, on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance has passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Slip-In Concrete of Sandusky, Ohio for the Sandusky Wills Park Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
Members of the public and commissioners have been paying attention. We'll remember that we denied this once before because it was above the bid, the engineer's estimate, I should say, and there have been some changes made. You were probably about to ask Mr. Klein to explain what it was we did to get this within the estimate, so I'm sorry for stealing your thunder, but I'm sure we had a discussion.
Mr. Klein, I'm sure we did just raise the estimate, did we?
No, sir, we did not just raise the estimate. We actually did two things between the original bid and the rebid. The first thing was, is we extended the timeline, which typically when a contractor's bidding, if you give them more time, they're able to fit it into their schedule on a, on a more favorable schedule for themselves. And the other thing that we did was we took out the pump track portion of it and bid that as an alternate. So there was the main skate park, which is concrete, and then just to the south, south of that is the pump track, which is similar to the one out there now, but that was bid as an alternate. That was alternate number four, and so when we took that out, after talking to the previous two bidders, that was something that put it over the top, and that came in at 132,000, which was why we were able to get it under the available dollars and get the engineer's estimate, so that it was more reflective of what the work was going to be on this station. So unfortunately, we are not recommending a ward of alternate four, which is the pump track, but we are recommending a ward of alternate one, which was two shade structures at the facility, so those will still be installed.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
So unfortunately, we are not recommending award of alternate four, which is the pump track, but we are recommending award of alternate one, which was two shade structures at the facility, so those will still be installed.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Comments or questions, Commissioners? Mr. Murray, if you could call the role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Mr. Murray, if you could present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Great Lakes Demolition Company, LLC of Clyde, Ohio, for the Columbus Avenue Reconstruction and Streetscape Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I move for the approval of this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Do I have a second to that? Motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just didn't hear that, Commissioner Coons. Comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Murray?
I spoke with you earlier today. I've had a few people approach me this week, just wanting to understand, while it's incredible that we're under the number that we wanted to be, what are we planning on doing? What is the plan for compensating for any additional work that may come up throughout the project?
Sure.
Mr. Seider?
Through you, Commissioner President. So you all approved 4.95 roughly previously, and the low bidder came in at 4,669. Now, that included $350,000 of contingency for unforeseen, unplanned things that we may get into in the ground that we don't have plans for. So that price includes that, 350,000. So it's about 7% of the overall that we have in a contingency, so it's just for those items, yeah.
So we have that, those dollars are available for additional work, should that be required?
Correct.
And that amount would be the 350 plus the difference between the low bid and what we had budgeted?
No, no. So the base bid was 4.669. We're recommending awarding alternate F, G, and J. Alternate F is brick pavers in place of concrete in the amenity zone, which is the back of curb up to the tree wells, the landscaped areas. Alternate G was about $31,000, and that's to upgrade the ADA domed mats. You typically see them as bright yellow or brick red plastic. Those are being upgraded to cast iron. And then alternate J is for spare ducts to be run on each side, so there's two additional two-inch conduits run the full length of the project that we can use for future communication needs, Wi-Fi, maybe electric if need be. But right now, it's pretty popular fibers a thing right now, and so to have those available at our own use or for renting them out, renting space out, it's the best time to get them in, and that price is real reasonable. So the total with all three of those alternates, we're recommending awarding Great Lakes 4.841, and then $212.01. So that's the 4,841,212.01. That's where that comes from.
So literally what you did was you took the difference between the low bid and the amount that we budgeted, and you allowed us to use, you wanted to pay for the alternates that you chose?
We, yes, yes. Within what we were given.
Yes.
We sat down and prioritized amongst J, you know, J alternates.
Sure.
10 alternates. We picked and choose what was best, where the most, we packed the most punch for the project.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, so Josh, I'm sorry, just to understand a little bit further, though, because we know that in Washington, since I've joined the commission, a lot of, you know, roadwork's really expensive once you get under the sewers and the water, and things can go wrong. So I think the question really thinks about, as the commission has said, we are pretty hard-lined, most of us, at the $5 million mark, and I think the question is, what do we, where does money come from if we were to exceed that? What would happen if we were to come into a situation where there's a big issue under there that we don't know about?
Yeah.
I mean, it might not be your, it might be Michelle.
We get it from Michelle.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
The bag underneath my desk. So that, we hope there won't be anything further beyond that $350,000 that's budgeted in there for contingency, whether, you know, if there's a water line issue, sewer line issue, we're going to have to address that. But we're really hoping at this point that there is anything above that $350,000 in contingency. But if there is, we'll be back in front of you. And, you know, at this time, we haven't made, we wouldn't make a determination of where those funds are coming from until an issue arises, see where that issue is and where the dollars should be coming from.
And a $350,000 contingency fee, which you mentioned, Mr. Seider, 7%, is certainly very reasonable.
In two blocks, seemingly, yes. But it's what we don't know, which is why we have the whole, which is why we have the line item in the first place.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
This is really addressed to the public, because I think the commission is fully appreciative of all this, but, so we're a legacy city, we're an older city. We have things underneath the ground that maybe weren't noted accurately, or maybe there was some deterioration that we don't know about. So we run into those things from time to time. We allow for additional work to be performed underneath these, under these contracts, because if we were to say to the contractors, "Look, we want you to give us a fixed number, and this is what's going to come in, and we don't care what pops up underground. We don't care what additional work is required." Well, then every single bidder looking at this would raise their bid, because they would say, "I'm not going to be the insurer for the entire city on this project. We want a contingency. If there's additional materials, additional quantities that require, or there are conditions that are unknown," then they fairly say, "Okay, we want to change order." Over time, it is to the city's benefit, because we get better bids. We get lower bids, because we are known as a fair partner in construction. If something comes up, we will have that conversation with the contractors, and we thereby, over time, will reduce our prices. We do, on occasion, go above the contingency. I remember that happening a few times. To my recollection, more often, we've had contingency funds that have been returned, and so these things do tend to wash over time. But I just wanted the public to be aware of why it is that we do, because it's not like if you're contracting for the installation of a new garage door, that's the number, because they can see everything there is to see. When you start going underground, there are surprises down there. Just wanted to add that comment here.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali?
I was just wondering, is there a usual contingency, or is there, is it 10% or 7% or 5%? Or does it fluctuate with the job?
It varies, and really is based on your confidence level with what you know about the project, and so we've seen up to 20% if it's a totally, you know, kind of going in blind thing. We did have borings taken, where they drill in through the pavements and get subsurface information, and so we have had some underground investigation done prior to, even prior to design. So we have a good level of confidence of what's in the ground. That's not to say we won't get surprised. And contingency is not a gimme. You know, the 350,000 is not a gimme. They're going to have to justify why we would dip into that amount. You know, a perfect project, we won't get into it, and we'll save $350,000, but we're comfortable on this project with about 7%.
Thank you, Seider. Mr. Murray, if you could call the role in the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Mr. Murray, if you could present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2024 V65T Butcher Municipal Street Sweeper from M-Tech Company of Cleveland, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing
The street sweeper is active five days a week. On Fridays, we get out to downtown and we ask people not to park Friday mornings. So we try to hit every street in the city that has a curb, every curbed street in the city. And some streets, obviously, a little more frequently than others based on if there's events or if they're more highly traveled or things like that. So this piece of equipment being 15 years old and being out, you know, 40 hours a week is, is very highly used and it gets a lot of miles on it, too. So the one big thing is I think a lot of residents know when the sweeper typically comes down their street. So it's nice when people pull off the road those evenings and into a driveway or park on a side street. So if we can get help with that, that's always wonderful. And obviously, collection season is difficult, but also the fact that we don't have a routine for trash collection also makes it so that we can't get a routine right after trash collection since everybody's on their own schedule.
Mr. Klein, do they still shoot water down on the surface before they go or is that how it works?
Yes.
Cool. And timeframe for getting this, it's like, it's like a fire truck, we're going to see this after Mr. Murray and I leave office?
Actually, this one is supposed to come within a few months.
Oh, really?
If we could get the fire and police department to drive around on these, we'd have them in no time.
Yeah. Oh, great. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
So I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Klein, that we don't have a single hauler system and therefore we can't get that kind of level of coordination. I think that some communities still say, if you live in this neighborhood, this is going to be your trash pickup day. And, and I think that's enforceable. I, I will say as an aside, I am a big proponent of going to a single hauler system. I realize that would cause some pain and angst and I don't think I have a majority of my colleagues who are interested in moving in that direction. But I will tell you, every other community our size has a single hauler system for a lot of reasons. If we went to a single hauler system, it would be about a million dollar dividend that we would be paying our residents because we'd have more competitive costs, more competitive pricing. But we're not there and, and I respect that. But would it be advantageous if we were to shift to, with time and with enough notice, to shift to a zone? I know, I know we already have zones for trash hauling. Would it be advantageous for the sweet, street sweeping and for other things potentially if we went to a zone schedule for picking up trash?
Through the Commission President, yes, it would be advantageous for sweeping if we had a, a routine schedule for trash collection. We do have a schedule that sometimes we have to veer from with the, the street sweeping, but we would certainly time it with the trash collection, with the leaf collection. With anything that we know is going on in the right of way, we can time it better and we can make sure that we're following those protocols. And I will add that if you noticed, the street sweeper is being paid for out of the sewer funds. And the reason for that is the, the operation and maintenance of that piece of equipment is paid for out of the, the street department. The staffing is out of the street department. So the sewer department has mentioned to me multiple times that the more that we can get that piece of equipment out on the streets, it helps the plugging of the sewers, it helps making sure that the leaves don't get down into the sewers, our bar screen, our disposal, all of those various things dramatically help the sewers. So to your point, with trash, trash collection and anything we can get on a routine would really help with that street sweeping and with the, the routine maintenance of the rights of way.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, I, I don't want to try and legislate, legislate from the table, that would be a mistake. But in due course, if, if staff might develop a recommendation regarding moving to a zone collection process, I think the Commission might be happy to at least hear what that is. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein, don't, don't we pick up according to zones now?
I mean, don't the haulers have to be in certain zones, certain times of the, the week?
Through the Commission President, they are asked to do that, but I'm not entirely sure how much they adhere to it. I, I don't oversee when they're coming into those zones. I, I don't know if the police chief would have more on the enforcement of that.
Through, through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Vajali. Yes, there are scheduled zone pickups. Our enforcement usually starts with a warning. We usually really try to stay by the time more than it is the day of the week. We don't want people out at 4:30 in the morning picking up residential trash because it wakes up the neighborhood. So that's kind of where our enforcement takes place. But there is an ordinance. It is legit, it's, it's set by ordinance.
Haulers don't know it.
Yeah, I thought so. Including you, you have to have your, your trash container back in by, I think, seven o'clock the night of pickup. I don't know if, and that would be difficult to enforce because I don't know who enforces that, but.
Well, it would be enforced by the police department. Without having the ordinance in front of me, I can't cite specifics, but our, our, our expertise and where we try to direct it is to make sure they're not there too early in the morning to wake up the neighborhoods. That's kind of where our focus stays.
And perhaps a start on that, on cleaning that up might be for us to get a communication out to those haulers that are licensed. Might be one of those things that may have slipped through the cracks, too.
So they, every year they register as a waste hauler with the city and they're, they're given a package with instructions?
They see it then?
Yeah.
Okay. Additional comments, questions? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to accept an entitlement grant in the amount of $715,553 total community development block grant funds for the program year of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and to submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a five-year consolidated plan containing a one-year action plan and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your play?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watt.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase of a bus shelter at the intersection of Camp Street and Buchanan Street from Global Industrial of Port Washington, New York, through the Equalist Group Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in the City Charter, Section 14.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watt.
I'm thrilled to see that we're finally getting some shelters around town. I know we all, everybody at this table, when you drive around and it's raining or snowing, you see people standing there waiting on a bus. And I'm sure they try to do their best to be there on time, but when you get soaked or if you got kids or elderly and, you know, waiting on a bus, that's really tough. So I'm glad, hopefully, more and more of these are coming.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase of a bus shelter at the Justice Center located at 222 Meg Street from Global Industrial Port Washington, New York, through the Equalist Group Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Murray.
It's somewhat ironic that we have these two pieces of legislation back to back because we're still expanding the number of bus shelters, which I agree with, Mr. Wantington, is great. This was the very first bus shelter that we erected in the city, I think in 2008. And it's now damaged, as Mr. Stacy explains. It's in the shop being repaired, but meanwhile, we're going to put a new one up in front of the Justice Center. So we'll get one more out there as a result of replacing this one because the old one is being refurbished and be placed somewhere in the community. So just want to point that out.
Still a gain of one bus shelters. Great. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jolly.
I just had a quick question from Mr. Stacy. Relative to these bus shelters, do you, what's your biggest challenge besides finding the funding? Is it available right away? I know if it's city right of way, it's not an issue, but if it's public, I mean, private right of way or somebody doesn't want to give up the right of way, is, is that an issue?
Absolutely. Through the Commission President to the Commissioner to address this question, yes, there's several concerns on addressing and establishing bus stops with bus shelters. For the example, I can draw your attention to on the screen, that is the location, the northeast point of the intersection of Camp and Buchanan. If you can tell, there are red lines around where the shelter will be installed. That is your right of way space. Several challenges would be funding sources, eligible areas to use those funding sources, right of way space, ridership to address team needs, things like that would be key factors.
Thank you.
Mr. Stacy, have we, have we met resistance on acquiring bus shelter spaces? And I'm, I'm thinking in terms of like the Perkins Plaza or the Sandusky Mall, both owned by Kafara. Have we met resistance there or are they amenable to doing that?
Through the Commission President to address the question, there have been several challenges to locate city-owned property outside of city areas. One, to install them, I would need the helps of Perkins Township and Orierry County to do so. But also, city-acquired funds need to be centrally located within the city. To address team needs, as we know, seven out of 10 riders go up and down 250 to go to Perkins as well as Erie County. To effectively address team needs, we have to be able to put city equipment outside of the city limits. And that is a barrier in my experience.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Mr. Chair, has there been an opportunity to try to have some of those discussions with our partners in the, in the other communities?
Through the Commission President to the Commissioner, yes, ma'am. We've had several tours of communication to local organizations as well as municipalities that we're connected with. We have yet to bring those communications into action, into a, a said project.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call the role on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed Freedom's Echo Sandusky's Underground Railroad Legacy Signage Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your play?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules as contained in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Harris, we're seeing in the back of the room and your name is attached to this legislation. We're, we're going to be going out for bids on some signage, apparently. And it's my understanding that this is no out-of-pocket cost to, to our city. We're doing this with already received grant dollars.
Good evening to the Commission President. That is correct. These funds were obtained through the Ohio 250 by semi-senquennial celebration. We received the amount of $40,000 and through which this is the bid process going out to be able to get those wayfinding signs acquired.
Excellent. Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. The resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number nine.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring a 2019 Hustler X1 mower as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a Hustler X1 60-inch Kawasaki mower from Baker Vehicle Systems of Macedonia, Ohio, for the grounds maintenance division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience and staff. I have several donations. First, we have a donation of $100 that was received from Commissioner Wantington to be used towards the pizza that's going to be delivered tomorrow at Sandusky High School for the gentleman's club and all of their excellent work through the city. We thank Commissioner Wantington and look forward to that. The school and kids are real excited, so we appreciate that.
Motion for that?
Move to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. No objection to the motion be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I expect all the Commissioners, if you get a chance, to stop by to say, to thank them because that gentleman's club is big. I mean, they do a lot of things in this community.
Yeah. They've been with us on every cleanup that we've done, I think.
Yep.
Our thanks to Mr. Wantington.
Thank you to the families of Wilma, Art and Larry Schlushman, including Julie Schlushman Skaggs, Ann Schlushman Voight and David Voight, Sr., Joyce and Daryl Deering, Sally Schlushman Davy and Dawn, Lori and John Schlushman and families for their donation of $1,060 to cover the cost of planting two con color firs in Washington Park this spring. It's a good motion, accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. No objection to the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to the entire Schlushman family.
And Parks and Rec would like to thank the Whitman-Weber Charitable Foundation for their $10,000 contribution for the Whitman-Weber Safety Town. This is part of a five-year grant running through 2027. It's a good motion, accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
And a second discussion. No objection to the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to the Whitman-Weber Foundation.
And then Sandusky Transit would like to thank the City of Vermillion for their $20,000 donation. The funds donated will be deposited in the Transit Fund to help offset operating and maintenance expenses. And Vermillion's been in the game donating to the city for many, many, many years. Let's thank them for their donation.
Move to approve.
Second.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
Yep.
We do. Discussion. Without any objection, that motion is approved. Hearing no objection, that's approved. Our thanks to the City of Vermillion for the 20 grand.
From administration, we will be releasing an online public survey as part of our strategic planning process this week. We ask that members of the public take a few minutes to fill out the survey, which will help us develop our updated strategic plan for the city. The survey will be posted on our website, cityofsandusky.com, as well as on social media. Paper surveys will be available as well. Public Works, the staff will begin working with QCI and Manneken Smith Group to develop a scope of work for construction inspection for the landing and the Sandusky Bay pathway east of Cedar Point Drive. Construction on East Water and Warren Streets will be completed prior to Memorial Day. We invite the public to a ceremonial ribbon cutting for the Warren Street project on Tuesday, May 28th at 4:00 PM. The ribbon cutting will take place on Warren Street at Heron Park. The city was awarded $1,567,000 from ODOT Systemic Safety Fund grant at 9010 for sidewalks along the south side of Cleveland Road, east of Pipe, and pedestrian improvements on Washington Street near Washington Park. Excellent job, you guys, again. The 2023 water quality report is in the process of being distributed and is currently available on the city's website. Big Island Water Works will continue, or they continue to meet and exceed all established drinking water standards. And lastly, working, work on the ODOT US 6 West paving project began today. The scope of the project includes Route 6 from the city limits to just east of Edgewater Drive. We expect asphalt paving to occur the first week of June. That concludes my report for this evening. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watt.
Can anybody tell me where Omni's at? Because they dropped the box off at my house five weeks ago. I know it's the right of way, but I'm sick of looking at it and I think.
Take those flags out.
Yeah, and the flag, yeah, you're right, Kate. That whole end, our whole end of town, I haven't seen them anywhere. And I get out quite a bit. Are they even working?
Josh, you have an answer for that?
Sure, yeah. So through Commission President, so Omni tells us they're done with underground work. They're starting cleanup work. Meanwhile, they're still doing aerial work. So you'll see them in the poles, on the poles, doing that. But as far as the drilling goes and the digging holes, that should be done.
They've been on your street.
But, but they're, but they're doing cleanup, they're in cleanup mode as well. So obviously, we can let them know that your side of town has not been addressed yet. So.
Just can we, so we can take, I could tell the neighborhood to take their flags out if they, instead of hitting them with their lawnmowers and stuff for their house?
Yeah, yeah. Plus, plus the, the flags are only good for like three days anyway. So once, once they're in the ground, like, they need to be doing the work. And if they're not doing the work, then the, the flags can get to be irrelevant anyway. So they need to call and get a re-oops. If Joe, your neighbor, needs, needs to get service anyway, they'll have to call again to, to get those relocated. So, yeah, sure.
I got a follow. So the box sitting in front of my house looks like a coffin. How long, how long is that going to stay there? If they're, if the underground works done, is this something secondary then? They're all over in the town, right? You got them on your street?
I don't have one of those.
It's, it's, it's an empty box just sitting, it hasn't been put in the ground.
Nothing's been put in the ground.
Okay. I don't know. I don't know. I can't, I don't have an answer for that.
I'd just like to see somebody drive by and honk a horn at my house.
Yeah.
I'd be thrilled at this point.
Mr. George.
Megan Sturkey.
We could pass it along. We, we have a running like punch list of things for them to correct. So it's, it's daily. We get, we get requests daily and we fork over what, as we get them.
Wow, okay.
So, yeah. It takes a lot of resources.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I am curious, though, this, you actually made me think about this because I've talked to a couple of residents where some work has been done by Omni and they actually left the yard in a couple of these cases in shambles. So like, I'm curious about what that process is for the folks who work for the city to ensure that they've done that. I know that the resident has to follow up initially, but then if that work isn't done to their satisfaction, like, what, what do we do?
Yeah, call, call into the city. Megan is keeping a, a backup list, if you will, of, we call it a punch list, areas that still need to be addressed. And so we constantly are on them about any of the outstanding areas, site by site, address by address. Like I say, it takes a lot of resources, you know, as if we didn't have enough projects going on.
Right.
We're also following Omni and, and trying to ensure that they get their things cleaned up, so.
So you've had quite a few complaints?
Oh, yeah. Every day, every day we get them. So, yeah, it's, if, if they're not getting a, a response from Omni, have them call in and, and get ahold of Megan, so.
Okay.
Yep.
In addition to that, we, we have obtained a bond from Omni so that we're hoping that we don't have to use it. We're hoping that they are responsive and they do clean up everything. But if it gets to it, we do have funding available through that bond that we can use to, to do the necessary work to fix things. But that's not going to be right of way. That's going to be something we have to work through, that legal process and through all that whole process. So hopefully, they'll take care of it in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments for the city manager? If not, we'll move to items of old business. Commissioners, do you have any items of old business to discuss?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Watt.
Just out of curiosity, we haven't heard anything in a while. Just any updates on the South Side project? Is, where are we on that? What's happening currently or how far off are we?
Colleen, do you have a?
Sure.
We have also begun to look at all of the properties that we have amassed around the park area and hope to be able to craft an RFP that we can put out to a developer once that infrastructure work is done.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, how are we doing on infrastructure?
Yes, we are moving forward with the design of the Camp Street sewer, which is the first project we're doing, because we are resurfacing Camp Street next year. We're also moving forward on West Forest and South Forest and a connection on, from Perkins Avenue up through those. The reason we're splitting it up like this is strictly based on funding. We're, we're doing the design of the entire sewer and water system. We have $125,000 grant for trees as well, so we're moving forward, but we're trying to make sure that we're giving the consultant as much ability to design portions of it that we can bid out to be spent with, or to be completed under ARPA funding, which needs to happen this year. So we've got that ARPA funding set aside, not just for that, but also for the playground and the splash pad and all of those amenities that are going to be added. So those projects have to be under contract this year to spend those funds, and then next year, we'll come back and do the remainder of the infrastructure. We're, we're moving as quickly as we can to make sure that we're hoping to bid both of those projects and have them under contract in November timeframe, with bidding possibly in September, October timeframe, if everything falls in line and we get the permits we need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any additional items of old business?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
This is probably old business that'll probably become new business, but I need some information on our after-school program at Mills. I received an email from a resident who asked about whether that program serves children outside of the city of Sandusky. And if it does, particularly now since we have a waiting list, first, I need to know if that's true, that we do have children outside of the city, and now there's a waiting list that can't accommodate the children who live in the city. Can anybody give me that information to let me know how that works?
Gilson.
Yeah, through the Commission President. I, I will get back to you about if we serve children outside of the city of Sandusky. And to my knowledge, we do not have a waiting list for children to participate in out-of-school summer, spring break camps. But I will get back to you with a definitive, I don't want to make up an answer for you here, about accommodating children outside of the Sandusky city.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I'd give others an opportunity because I...
All right, items of new business?
I was just going to, can I make a comment with Richard?
Sure.
Just, this, I think, is a perfect segue, and just starting to think about how we can partner with the schools in after-school programming, working with them. We have facilities there, and trying to have a partnership with the schools in the city in serving more of our kids. With the three beautiful new schools we built, as well as Mills School, we have a lot of opportunity to serve kids. So I'd like to see us work really hard on partnering with the schools with programming.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Since we're on that, that particular topic, and this is associated with or directly related to the advisory committee that we started, as it relates to the advisory committee, you were absolutely right. Section 29 deals with the start of advisory committees, so I appreciate that.
I only know that because I have a law director that shared that with me.
Yeah, yeah. So one, so one of the things that I noticed is that, and this is absolutely what I did, I just started reaching out to folks. We didn't establish an advisory committee. But one of the things I wanted Commissioners to chime in on and tell me how you feel about this, but I don't know what kind of advisory committees that you actually formed in the past, but just as I reached out to people just to determine whether or not they'd be interested in serving on something like that, when it did come to us, those committee institutions or organizations were already named. And so from my perspective as Commissioners, I would think that we had a process in place where we're all able to talk about who those individuals might be, what organizations they might come from, and then determine why we invite them to the table. What expertise do they bring? Have they been involved in grant projects and writing grants and working with others to partner to bring our children, our teens, and young adults programs? So I just wanted to hear from you all about, how has that process worked in the past? Have you actually formed these advisory committees, and then you brought it before Commissioners, and you said, here are the members, let's vote?
I, I have no experience in advisory committees. That is the first committee that I've ever served on a commission that had an advisory committee, so it was a one-off for me.
Interesting to hear from all others, particularly Commissioner Murray, because you brought that to us with all of the organizations attached already. Now, we could have talked about it, and for the sake of not really necessarily going on and on about it, and some of the people who I had invited were, their organizations were represented, so I, I'd like to know what, you know, your thinking was in terms of...
I'm not, I'm not under examination here.
No, it's not an examination. I just want to know what your thinking is.
We don't ask questions of other Commissioners at the table, so that's not appropriate. If you wanted to call...
Why not?
It's not within Robert's rules of order.
So I couldn't ask a question about how that process worked, how you came up with all the organizations that actually became a part of the advisory committee? I don't understand why it wouldn't be.
I've answered your...
Any additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman, just as far as the advisory committee, I, I, yeah, I haven't had any experience with the advisory committee.
We've not had one before.
Yeah, before, before this, this occurrence.
So any thoughts, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, any thoughts on how that process should be unveiled from this point forward?
I, I have no thought on that, Commissioner Coons. I think it was very appropriate, Mr. Murray brought this concept of advisory committee to us. He made that suggestion. And at any point in time during that meeting, you could have, you could have voted against that, or you could have raised an objection at that point in time. I think it's totally inappropriate for you to be inquiring now or indicting Commissioner Murray or any of us here on how the committee was formed at this point in time. You're a day late and several dollars short with that.
So I can't ask questions about how we got there?
You, you had an opportunity to ask those questions when the motion was made.
I did ask the questions.
And I believe you voted in favor of that motion.
Yeah, I did, because you asked me a question, would I be okay if we did this? But I just needed to know how the process worked, and you, we still haven't explained it, but I can move on.
Well, I think we'll move on then. Additional items of new, of new business? Are there any public comments on any item that pertains to city business? Please step to the podium, and if you identify yourself, and tell us what your comments are.
Hi, my name's Jimmy Blake. I'm at 622 East Jefferson. To Mr. Wantington, last week, the Omni Fiber people were out by me, if you want to try to find them. I, many of you know me, some are not familiar with me. I have been working in technology for the greater part of 35 years now, fairly experienced with it. And I want to let the Commission and anyone else who is interested know that on June 22, at the Sandusky Library, I'm going to start a series to teach people how to form a technology business from the ground up. It will be open to the public, free for all to join. And I also wanted to gauge the interest, I know that there's no votes or anything on this that can take place today, that's something that takes time, of the city and if there would be an interest in exploring creating a teaching data center for the city of Sandusky. I have started to pursue this on my own, realized that I don't have the funds on my own to create this, and I wanted to see if it would be something of interest to the city, especially with the data center that is going in Perkins in 2025, I believe.
Thank, thank you for that, thank you for that suggestion. Commissioner Pajali?
Mr. Chairman, I just, could you define what a teaching data center would be?
Yes, very much. So you would show people from the ground up how to build a data center, what the key elements of a data center are, and by going through that, you don't just explore running a data center, not just, you know, the jobs are coming to Perkins, but you explore all aspects of technology, servers, managing large amounts of desktop computers, even just the elements of starting a business itself, useful things for all people, but especially geared towards technology. With Omni Fiber coming in the area, there's a lot more opportunity for people to get into technology businesses, even run out of their home, and this could help them as well.
I just wonder, have you approached the school system, adult education people on this concept? Because it kind of seems like it fits in the educational realm and not necessarily in the, in the government realm.
Sure. I have not yet approached the, the school system on this. I wanted to start here and, and go from there, so...
Mr. Pajali?
Mr. Chairman, I, I wonder if you, have you talked to the, the folks over at Rise? I mean, over at GSP?
Uh, no.
And their Rise program? And they have a couple of different programs that maybe something like that would fit with their future plans.
Sure. I'd be happy to take information on them. I've not spoken with them at this point.
Someone, maybe, Colleen, you could give him some contact information for GSP, it might be a start.
It'd be my pleasure.
Great.
Certainly.
Thanks for your suggestion.
Yep.
Additional comments from the public on any, any item pertaining to city business? Sir, if you come to the podium and identify yourself, so we have a way to get back to you, that'd be great.
My name's John Packelhofer. I live at 427 Jackson Street here in town. The question I have is, I am disabled and on disability. Now, before the COVID hit, or when the COVID hit, I should say, there was transportation supplied for disabled people to and from doctor's appointments. Didn't matter if you were on disability, if you were on SSI, didn't matter, you got the transportation. This year, I'm on disability, like I said. I got notice at the end of April, my transportation's cut off. I called John Family Services, talked to Paige out there, and asked her why am I cut off, I'm on disability. She said because John Family Services no longer get any grant money, and so they had to look at if you're on SSI compared to SSDI. Low income comes first, high income's last. I'm not knocking low income, not knocking that. But I checked around. I don't know of any transportation services for disabled people to go to doctor's appointments out of, out of Sandusky, or even in Sandusky, for people that apparently have too much income. So how are disabled people like me? I have to go to Toledo for my neurologist. How am I going to get there? Do I look like a Kennedy? Do I look like a Rockefeller? I don't have a limo driver at home, sure as hell can't walk that far, so I'd like to know if anything's ever been done for disabled people in this county to have transportation services.
I'm, I'm wondering if your question, you mentioned the county, if your question